Called meeting to order four thirty bingo regular meeting minutes, March fourth.
I'll make a motion.
Well, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? First selectmen's update. I think kind of under this, we can add a couple of things. Three real quick ones. Under two A, maybe we can make this all on motion. Two A be local traffic authority rumble strips group one oh nine. Two B would be fire engine bid. For engine five. And two C would be region twenty update.
All right, I'll make a motion add to the agenda.
On second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? So two A local traffic thirty rumble strip. I don't know if you know they're redoing one oh nine from two oh nine down to sixty three this summer. I've probably seen all the activity with cutting back for us and fixing stuff. And they did send out a notification that they're going to install the center line rumble strip on this stretch of road. I think they're trying to get that done everywhere. Uh, I'm not a big proponent of it on local roads, but you know, these quicker, larger highways, I guess. Uh, it's probably beneficial. They are just kind of looking for us to say, do you need a public hearing on this or not? I forgot if you don't know because they're and they're gonna do it anyways.
Isn't that a state road?
It's a state road.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I think we do.
So, I mean.
That's just. Who minds going down the center of road with the light having backlash?
Yeah.
So they're gonna do it anyway?
Yeah, there would there be a motion not to recommend a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
About second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? They do help, by the way.
Yeah.
Fire engine bid, I think remember a while back, we kind of accepted a bid for the old engine five.
Right.
Yeah.
And apparently that wasn't really a legitimate bid or the person wasn't legitimate. Uh, it was a representation of who he is representing is, you know, the fire department down Oxford. So that kind of fell through. And the thing was sitting there and finally get this through the online source. A fire company down in Texas was very interested in it. And we're kind of like, I mean, one, how are you going to get back there because you better not want to drive it. You can do fifty five miles an hour max, maybe sixty downhill. But they're very interested, they're very small town out there. And a representative from the fire company or from the town came flew up the other day to check it out. And it was the same day, the engine went through its pump test because they were requiring the pump test before they would purchase the engine. Well, guess what? It failed to pump test from the sitting, you know? But it wasn't the pump itself, it's a couple of valves on the engine that were allowing, you know, uh, water to leak past, you know? So it wouldn't maintain the pressure. Uh, we did get a quote from Gones of Night down in Watertown to repair that, you look at thirty five hundred, four thousand dollars or so. Uh, when we let this fire company know that and they talked about it and they came back with a bid of five thousand dollars. Uh, and they would take care of the valves, the cost of. So, and they're gonna send a low boy up to load it on and have it halt. So given the condition of the engine and, you know, the cost of getting it to pass a pump test, which anyone would need to have. I'd make the recommendation to accept their offer on this and it'd be nice to, you know, sad to see it go, but it's good to see it go after all these years. If you want to, it's the city of Maud volunteer fire department, M A U D in Maud, Texas.
They've really invested in in it thus far.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I was surprised the guy flew up before the pump test is finished. But they really wanted to see it. I think they can really use it. So they're offering five thousand for it.
That's what we were talking about.
Yeah, we were hoping, I think the other guys said seven.
Seven thousand, yeah.
Yeah, and.
But if you look at, if we have to fix that pump, if they're gonna take the truck and fix the pump.
Yep. They're also willing to take some of the hose that failed the pressure tests uh, recently, they're willing to take that off our hands so we don't have to throw it out or so. But is there a motion to accept their bid?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, it's, yeah, it's good to get it out of our yard and doesn't sit there and deteriorate anymore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. Okay, onto region twenty update. Uh, I think you have in your packet. There are four first selectmen from Warren Morris, Goshen, Litchfield got together along with the chairman of the board of education from each of the towns. I believe it was last Tuesday night.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
And it was, you know, we're very, very, obviously very concerned. Just starting with the current budget and the overages that we're seeing, you know? One point nine to a possible two point three so far, depending on what costs are, you know, put to whose budget as far as some of the one time costs that are still outstanding. And, you know, they, they keep spending and it's, it's just, obviously it's not right. Uh, we felt that they need to be, you know, told that they have to follow state law, they need to come before a district meeting and seek approval of this appropriation for money spent outside of the budget that we approved. And so that was our letter. It was received last Thursday night at their Board of Ed meeting. I think there may have been some confusion upon the Board of Ed chair's point of view on this letter. Uh, it's like we're endorsing a supplemental budget and that's not what we're saying at all. I noticed a few people pointed that out on Facebook as well. It's, we're not endorsing a budget, we're asking them to follow the law, uh, call a district meeting and get the input from the citizens on their overspending of the current budget. Monies that we have not approved. So that's where we are now, as you know, as well as, you know, their budget proposals. Uh, I don't know if they decide on what percentage they're gonna go up. But it's probably gonna mean at least a fifteen percent increase for the town of Morris and all the towns on their current level spending for region twenty. Which is over seven hundred thousand dollars for the town of Morris. But we really feel they need to take a seriously, serious look again and look at some reductions. And I do hope, you know, they're talking about twelve full-time positions being eliminated, but I do hope those are not all teachers. They should not be teaching positions. Maybe there is some room there in the teaching, but I think, and if you look at an article in the paper today, uh, a lot of districts are getting kind of top heavy with their administration and that's where I feel it lies. I think they need to reduce, we've been asking for that for eight months. Uh, they've done some minor reductions, but I think there's more that can be done.
Or any more minor adjustments to this budget.
Yeah.
What was the response for the, um, to go to referendum?
That has not, I have not seen that on their agenda and they have a, I think on the agenda, something like correspondence or something to the board. I expected to hear that last Thursday night. Uh, I believe Goshen, Litchfield, Morris at least have made that request to their board and haven't seen on their agenda yet. So we're gonna definitely keep on top of that and if, when the timetable opens up for petition, if they don't act on.
I'll, I'll do a petition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do a petition for the town.
We'll definitely make sure we get the right verbiage and have it equal the same throughout all four towns and gather signatures and go to a petition for a referendum, which is kind of sad, they should, they should vote to do it. So.
So getting back to this, this letter that you signed. Do we have any legal recourse on this?
Yeah, that's a good question, it's, you know, you have all these state statutes, what's the recourse?
Reach out to Attorney General?
I've contacted Attorney General's office. Haven't gotten a lot of help yet on that, there may be something more we can do. I've kind of got referred to the State Board of Ed. More specifically for the, all the outstanding associated costs with, you know, region six and the closing down of region six and Litchfield School. Uh, Attorney General kind of felt it was in the Board of Ed's hands. And Board of Ed is like, well, region six sees that June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, we really don't have anything to do with that. So it's kind of getting bounced back and forth there. And speaking of, you know, region six costs, I've got, we asked for all the invoices because they're saying we owe uh, two hundred two thousand or a hundred seventy eight thousand to Litchfield Schools, uh, you know, region six schools owe that to Litchfield Schools. I think it was another hundred and seventy or so thousand that region six owes to region twenty. May have that backwards. But, uh, so I asked for all the invoices and we finally got them to print it off. I started going through them and I really had some serious questions about uh, who these actually belong to, from what I can tell just by going through them today. Looked to me, it looks like the majority of these belong to region twenty. I mean, you're talking legal advice, uh, uh, purchasing of six-year subscriptions for curriculum, uh, for the different schools. You're not purchasing six-year subscriptions in May of twenty four for region six, you're purchasing that for region twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a lot here, all the vodka, uh, you know, swag, I guess you could call it, there's a ton of that. I want to make sure we're not gonna pay any bills out of region six that we're not, really should be, we shouldn't be paying, so.
And you've just received these, so these have yet to be discussed with the other towns?
Yeah, I know, uh, Denise Rapp, uh, sent back some questions to, uh, the new CFO. Laurie. Julia Cardillo.
Yeah.
And I had some questions too, I said, you know, you know, who do these belong to, give me exactly who paid for each one of these? So we know if we didn't pay for, or we did pay for something we shouldn't have. So hopefully we'll get some more answers from them on that, but I don't think we should pay a dime until we figure out exactly who it really belongs to.
So just for clarity, when you're sent these invoices, it was a here are the region six invoices or is there a little bit more explanation that?
Uh, well, we asked.
Why would they deem these even region six if they're that obvious that we're not gonna pay for a six-year contract for reasons?
I think Julia Cardillo went through these and dropped what supposedly we owed to Litchfield from say two hundred thousand down to a hundred and eighteen thousand, she felt there were some errors in what she saw. And, uh, that's why I wanted to look at myself and see what I could find. I mean, I'm looking at this, show me something that region six paid for that we wouldn't have normally paid for. If there wasn't a merge going on. If we were supposed to pay for something. Great, but if it was a result of the two districts coming together, then to me, that's not a region six bill. That's a region twenty bill. So, yeah, there's a lot of questions there.
But no kind of details were also provided.
Well. If you go through this, at some point, someone wrote down, uh, region six at forty five percent, Litchfield Public Schools at fifty five percent. Some of these actually have a P O on them, which is surprising because if you have P O, you should have, it should be encumbered, encumbered monies. And then it shouldn't be outstanding. If the money was encumbered, the money was there to pay for it.
Right.
Obviously, something went wrong in their system, so. I can send you, I can probably print off everything if you want to really take a good look yourselves at some of this stuff. And kind of going along the same lines of the region six liabilities that we've talked about, the pension, outstanding pension liabilities. And I think for Morris, it's gonna cost us to stay even, I think a hundred and sixty seven thousand a year for our share of the region six pension.
But that's pretty well set.
Yeah, I mean, well, we have to sit down and talk with the other towns, how much do we want to put into it every year? You know, figure that out. So in the, for the budget later, I just threw in two hundred thousand, uh, because, you know, you do want to build up that principal, make some money on it while it's sitting there. And also be able to pay your outgoing costs as well.
But that one's clear and we understand that that is a region six.
It's, yeah, it's gonna be hard to argue that it's not ours, but we shall see, there's a lot of, there's still talk to have about that. Uh, anything on your end?
Well, the only other thing, you know, in, in the school budget that they're proposing, are they looking at, what if there's cuts to Medicaid? Could that affect children that go to the schools that they get money for?
I do, I know, you have a lot of questions. And the federal cuts.
On the federal cuts, are they looking at if they cut certain things that maybe they were looking for grants and stuff that that may not be available?
That's possible, yeah. I know Governor Lamont was, it was in yesterday's paper, I think he was talking about how the federal cuts are gonna affect Connecticut. And, uh, one I could imagine might affect education is our educational cost sharing monies that we get from the state. Uh, maybe those could, we'll get reduced, you know?
Yeah, so that's gonna be, that's another increase to the budget because we do.
Yeah.
So that budget not really a finalized budget because they don't know what the cuts are gonna be. And hopefully they'll know by the time we either vote on that budget or whatever we do with it.
It should be the beginning of May that they'll vote on it one way or another. Well, I, I know which way we'll vote on it by referendum, but.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, there's a lot of probably still unanswered revenue questions and that's part of that fifteen percent increase. You know, they're saying it's only a four point six or six, up to a six point something percent increase, but that doesn't cover, you know, the deficit they're facing. You know? Got to factor all that in.
So the fifteen.
In the loss of revenue.
Is including the deficit or is it above?
I think the fifteen does include the deficit. Unless it's just the loss of revenue.
And in regards to what you were just talking about, they would have to build the budget based on assuming that that wouldn't be coming through.
Right.
But then if it comes through, then next year we couldn't ask for less.
I don't think they're thinking about that. Yeah, I read the article in today's paper and they talked about, you know, they get money for from the, from the federal government for education and stuff and I don't know if that's gonna come through.
Right.
I don't think anybody knows right now.
No, I don't think so either, which is why they would probably have to plan to assume it wouldn't. And then if it does come through, it would offset something else. But again, we wouldn't be able right to reduce the budget for next year to accommodate for those savings, so.
Yeah, and how they're gonna deal with the deficit still kind of up in the air, is it, you know, is it gonna roll into the next year's budget? Uh, there's some talk of, uh, bonding all the debt into a long-term bond, a twenty-year bond, um, you know? Hopefully the interest rates would be low enough to make that feasible, if that's the direction they went in. There's some choices out there. I don't know, it's, they're not easy.
Have we been told an actual timeline of how, of the steps involved in this so that we can start to understand any future deadlines or dates of acceptance of this? I, because I know all of us are saying, oh my gosh, we're talking about this week after week after week. Like, is, is there a May third?
Right.
Like, we don't know that, right? We don't know what that next date or day deadline is.
Well, I think they'll have, you know, they should have their budget by the beginning of May.
They'll have their budget by the beginning of May and then from there, we're going to start to look, have to look at referendums or.
Well, prior to that meeting in the beginning of May, we'll have our answer on a referendum. Whether it's petitioned or it's, uh, agreed to.
Okay, so that's, we've got a month.
I think we should gear for a referendum, a petition. Just in case.
Oh, yeah. Have the question ready, have the sheets ready.
Have everything ready. And have it leave, you know, you need ride back or whoever got the legal end of it.
Right.
And then.
Because there is a petition out there to increase the budget. Uh, the education budget right now.
Increase it or accept what's.
I think increase it, from what I understood. Let's see. I'll urge you to propose a budget with a higher percentage increase than is, than what is currently being considered at six point two, six two percent for the upcoming fiscal year. So they want a higher increase in six point six two for the budget. I don't know, I, I don't know how people can afford it, you know, because literally that's probably at least a fifteen percent increase in our share. And, uh, there's a lot of people there, you know, they're making it now barely. How they're gonna do it when these costs keep running up and up and up.
Well, and that's the thing, it's not necessarily just the cost going up, it's understanding what the cost going up is covering and whether or not it's necessary, legit, exactly. That's to me the issue, if we were saying the cost is going up because we're going to get this and we're going to do this and then we either say, well, that's fantastic. Or we're not ready for that, that's one thing, but there's so much more confusion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how you want to do this, I know there's some questions online about the budget, do you want to kind of open up to the public at this point for?
Yeah.
School budget.
Yeah.
Because we do have going down, we do have a, a few other item, line items that may take a little time.
Okay.
Uh, starting the room, if John has any questions at all.
Uh, yeah, just the clarification, um, if I'm not clear on the petition that you mentioned for a referendum. So can you just clarify exactly what both those things would be?
Well, petition for referendum, well, we asked via letter from the Board of Selectmen in Morris as well, I think Goshen did it, Litchfield did it, I'm not sure about Warren, all Board of Selectmen there in at least three towns asked the Board of Education to bring this vote for the budget to a referendum with polling in each of the four towns. Instead of going to a district meeting and then just doing a vote up there.
Oh, okay, so the difference, so normally, normally the budget vote when I did last year, but you went to wherever the location.
Yeah.
So what you're asking for, the towns are asking for is to make it easier for the townspeople to say to come here by, at a referendum to vote for the school budget locally as opposed to just one location.
Yeah, and plus, uh, it would also be from six AM to eight PM.
Right.
Instead of
At seven.
At seven o'clock at.
Yeah, that election, I think we had like less than twenty people in Morris actually voted. Which was shocking to me, coming from, from my background on Long Island as an educator where we'd have like thirty five hundred people, you know, literally voting for, for a budget. Where other people going out, come back maybe.
We had people walk in and it was over.
Yeah.
It's too late, so that's the thing too, it wasn't a time like from seven to eight, it was like it started at seven and you showed up at seven twenty, you missed it.
Yes, yep.
Laurie. You're muted, I don't know if you want to speak. Here you go.
Hi, thank you very much, Tom, for, for letting me speak in here and I appreciate everything everyone has been trying to do in this really chaotic situation. I feel like we need a team of teams to get the job done, but again, I appreciate everything everyone's doing. I have a couple of questions, but, um, I'm gonna start with what I think is the easiest one and was wondering about where the town is at with a forensic audit. I know that Litchfield has submitted a request for one. And I'm wondering where we're at with that and the thoughts on that?
Uh, there has been some talk from the other two towns in the region, you know, the region six about this. Uh, I'm gonna see the other two selectmen tonight and see how they feel about it. I would be interested in seeing what comes back with the RFPs for the Litchfield audit and how much it might be. And if they get any responses on it too. Because I, I imagine it's gonna cost, you know, some significant money, but between three towns, it, you know, it might be affordable for us. And I, I'd like to see how it comes back from in Litchfield, how they, how, what responses they get for their RFP too.
I would just interject that I, one of my notes is I agree a hundred percent to get a forensic audit for region six before we pay them a bounty. Because even if it costs X amount of tens of thousands, it's gonna be a lot less than what they're trying to maybe get from us. So in this way, and honestly, I think if we get the forensic audit or something, you can then go to the townspeople and say, we did everything that we could possibly do, here it is in black and white, boom, 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 this is what we have. And so as opposed to everyone maybe trying to guess and, you know, highlighting each line or something.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Yeah, I might clear up some of those questions you have about those receipts you just received too, Tom. So I, I, I'm being guided to ask some of these questions. I myself am not particularly invested in who done what. I think we have a much bigger issue ahead of us, um, in front of us. And my next question, which is a really, I think, hard question is, I'm, I don't know if others have asked this, but is this merger that is currently before us legal? What we voted on, what we have before us, they're not even close. So I, I would like, um, to have some guidance from all of you on how to pursue this question. Because we're almost pacing our tails, right? Again, I, we need a team of teams to, to almost pin down what's happening before us. But my bigger question is, is it actually legal? I did speak to the AG's office today, spoke to a Justin, very nice man, like you, Tom. He deferred me to the Department of Education and I didn't reach out to them today because I wanted to come before all of you and, and see what your experiences have been. It, it's somewhat mind-blowing to think that we, we have no support from the state at this point, given the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they've overspent. I, I don't even know what to say about that, I'm a little bit out of my league here, obviously, as I think many of us are, no one's really, the AG's offices never had this, uh, come before them before. I asked him about a forensic audit and he's like, well, nobody's ever requested a forensic audit from the Department of Education. And I said, well, I guess we're gonna all learn something new. So those are, those are truly my, my two big questions that I, as a taxpayer, would like to have answered. And I don't know, do I need to start a petition? You know, what, what, what can I do to be helpful? And what can I do to get some answers?
I think, uh, a good place to start, hopefully, I, I talked to an attorney at the State Board of Ed a couple of times about our situation. And, you know, you kind of, you bring up a good point, I mean, we, the voters, went into this with a regionalization plan that we all agreed upon. And doesn't appear it's being really followed.
Not even close, it's not, I mean, there isn't, there is, it's not even close, like it can't, I don't have any other words for it other than it's not even close.
I mean, they could probably only rule on what was actually put in, put, put down in writing and, uh, some of these promises that were made with handshakes and, you know, all that. Uh, but they're very hard to get an opinion or like a true opinion out of because I think they're kind of, they don't want to get too involved. You know what I mean? Kind of like Justin, I mean, I appreciate his, you know, getting back to me and he got back to you and, uh, he talked. But he kind of sent us in the same direction. But he kinda sent us in the same direction. You know, they don't wanna, they're like a ten foot pole, they don't wanna touch it.
And then, and that's okay, and I said to him, listen, I don't know how much of this is political and I, I, obviously, everything that gets done seems to be, have some political edge to it, but the, at the end of the day. We, if they're not going to help us, then we need to check with our own attorneys to find out whether this is even legal, unfortunately, what I need. Is what was stated in that vote and I don't have that. And I don't know if you, any of you have that. But that certainly would be the starting point, what was actually the vote, what did we vote on, I don't have the verbiage. But that would be the starting place and I'm not gonna sit around here for three, I mean, I've been after the AG's office for three months. And they're all washing their hands and you have Harding out here looking for a hot, you know, one point. Nine million dollars, well, we're not gonna get, doesn't look like we're gonna get much from the state of Connecticut, we, we, we can't wait, you know, Karen Reddington, she disappeared, where'd she go? Is she on vacation for the last three months? Doesn't respond to any more emails, so I, I'll just keep going forward, but I do want to be helpful.
Yeah, I think, you know, getting uh. The word out to people about what is actually happening, you know, is very helpful and uh. Your pressure, other people's pressure at the AG or the State Board of Ed, I think. Kind, could kind of start pushing them to maybe trying to deal with this a little bit.
And the merger. And. The merger. Why are we not looking at that? I mean, it's an honest question, why are we not looking at that? We all know the tax burden this is going to present to everyone, we know it. We, every single one of us know. Why are we not talking about it? Let's talk about it, I wanna talk about it.
Oh, you gotta see if it's even possible.
Okay, what do you need me to do, Tom? I'm on it.
Stay on Justin. Keep calling him.
Justin refer, I'll call the Board of Ed tomorrow and, and, and I will apply some pressure to them. But I, I really want, I'm asking you, the three of you, to please talk to our attorneys, our town attorneys. To find out if this merger is actually legal. I don't know how it can be. But.
That's a good question.
It's a question.
Thank you, appreciate your time and I do honestly appreciate everyone's efforts. But we have a lot of people to take care of right now and um. It's not looking good. We can't just sit back and say. I mean, they're unreasonable, the Board of Ed is unreasonable. They, they, they haven't heard a thing we've said, if, if they heard anything we said, I would be a lot more comfortable as a taxpayer. I, I'm not worried about being able to pay the increase, but I am worried about hundreds of families who are barely making it now. So I appreciate everybody, uh, please email me, I'll do whatever you need and I will be reaching out to the Board of Ed tomorrow, I'm be happy to report off on that.
Oh, the State Board of Ed?
Yeah.
Alright, great, well, thank you, Lori.
What, and forensic audit, yeah, get on top of that too, please, let me know what I can do.
Talk about tonight.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
You know, anyone else online? Comments? Questions? Uh, with region twenty?
Can you raise your hand?
This one, yeah. But I didn't wanna step on anybody else's toes. So just curious with these, we're talking about like the Board of Ed and the state, does the Board of Ed or the state? Do we have a state liaison? That towns deal with? With, with the state government? Like, when you have an issue. Who do you call? Who do you call at the state level?
Any issue?
Yeah.
Well, it depends, well, it depends what it is. And you call Office of Policy Management, you call, you know.
But is the Board of Ed have a liaison that deals with? Cause I mean, or a lawyer, because.
There's an attorney at the State Department that I've talked to a couple of times.
And that's supposed to help out districts. With legal issues.
Right.
Just as teachers' unions, uh, the teacher union lawyers help out local unions with any legal issues.
I believe.
So where's that, is that that Justin person?
Uh, Justin's at the AG's office.
Okay, so where's the lawyer for the Board of Ed?
Uh, I don't remember his name off the top of my head, I talked to him a couple of times.
No help, nothing, crickets?
Well, yeah, not a lot of help. Like I said, it didn't seem like they really wanted to get involved and upset the apple cart, but it's kinda too late, tipped over. Um, so we're gonna reach back out, see if they'll be helpful, you would hope the uh Board of Ed. Local, our local Board of Ed has been reaching out for more guidance from the State Board of Ed. That's what they're there for.
And is there somebody then, I guess the, the other question maybe you bring it up, is there someone in that Board of Ed? Legal group or whatever that oversees. Boards of Education in the state?
I do not know.
Yeah, cause if, there is a person, like, you know, that's an overseer, that may be the person to try to get to, to say that. You know, there may be, to use terms that were out there that have been used, maybe some illegal spending in this board. That maybe needs to be looked at as an oversight. From the Board of Ed, maybe that's an avenue. Uh, you know, to look under a rock for. You know, and then the Goshen. Uh, what if that person resigned, right, recently?
Yes, Ashley.
Yeah, so, so they're down.
Yeah.
Cause then again, you know, talking about petitions and stuff, if the Board of Ed is, is not responsive. To the townspeople, you know, could you then theoretically have a petition to impeach them all and get rid of them? And elect new people?
Yeah.
I mean, that's like crazy dramatic.
It's very difficult to uh remove an elected official.
Yes. Yeah. But I'm, I'm just thinking, just, you know, it's, the, the state really. Needs to, you know, step up your.
Give a little guidance.
Yeah, at a minimum, yeah. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I would think the Attorney General would get involved with this, I mean.
Try again, it may have to be the right question, has to be formed properly in order to trigger something at the HB's office.
I think the AGs are mostly interested maybe in money issues and fraud. So that may be the avenue to go with because he seems to be, from what I see of him on TV and interviews anywhere where they sniff. You know, some fraud or, or whatever, that, that seems to get his radar going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Anything more with region twenty? Uh. Tax collectors report. I think it's attached. So has some. Four ways to go, ninety three point three nine. Assessor. I'm printing out that question. I don't have it. Need to find it. It was the motion we were looking for. To approve. The option. For the motor vehicle assessments. We can go on to. Review of the budget. So, I wasn't able to print out another budget, Laurel's the way I'm. Leave. So on the first page miscellaneous capital non recurring, I left the uh. Just for mill rate sake, percentage increase, I left the uh capital non recurring up at seven hundred thousand. I believe we can probably reduce that, we have a. Unassigned balance in capital, uh, close to three hundred thousand. And we're looking at. Right around six hundred and fifty thousand worth of projects this year or monies that we're gonna put away for the future. Uh, I met with uh. Rob Edner, Kyle and uh Rosenbeck and Rick, our treasurer, yes, or is it yesterday? Yeah. And we wanna keep putting away money for uh replacement of engine three, which would be fifty thousand, I'll get this. All cleaned up and sent out to you guys, uh, Rick wasn't here today. Keep putting away for the uh two thousand eight international dump for the highway department, is that should be replaced. Probably in the next four years or probably four years. Uh, we are obligated for the John White Bridge, uh, to, we need another hundred thousand to, for the state match. And that project, we're getting five hundred thousand from the state, we had a two hundred thousand dollar match. But the thing with that is what we're hoping is the bids, which will, it'll be going out the bid pretty soon. That the bids will come back, uh, less than the seven hundred thousand available and we can hopefully reduce this additional hundred thousand in next year's budget down a little bit. Uh. We'll continue on line item for capital municipal building capital maintenance, we've been doing that at twenty five thousand a year. Takes care of these small capital projects, uh, bathrooms and such. Uh, fire pond dredging. We still have to keep going on that, that's a fifteen thousand dollar line item. Looking to replace the fire company utility truck in the next four or so years, so we're looking at throwing twenty thousand a year at that. So in the next four years, might have enough to replace that uh. Vehicle. Remember what year that is? It's getting old.
It is.
Might be no five.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. But I mean, it's. For its years, it's in pretty good shape, but it's showing its age. The highway utility truck pickup truck needs to be replaced too. Uh, looking at putting another hundred twenty five thousand into Looking Glass Hill Road project. And we are waiting on word on a uh grant for that road. Uh, so, between that. And I think last year we put. Hundred twenty five thousand into that project as well, so. That two fifty should help us cover our cost of the grant. Our match. We're looking at a. Reclaiming paving Benton Road in the future, so looking at starting that for seventy five thousand this year and keep adding to it. We wanna wrap up the south wall replacement at the transfer station, uh, if you notice. On the right as you drive up the top, that whole wall on the right side has to get pretty much replaced. We bought all the uh. Block. Components of that wall, we have to buy more material to do that and the highway department will be doing that project themselves. Uh, so we, but we need another forty thousand probably to wrap it up with material, the concrete up top, the repaving and such. Hopefully have that done this year. Uh. Firehouse floor coating. Uh, they've been looking at this, this is the uh three bay where the engines sit, that was built in nineteen eighty five, I think. And it's been deteriorating, the floor that's there. Fortunately. There was a main floor that was underneath and there was about a two inch floor on top of that. The deterioration really only got into that top level. Uh. But it, we had a. Engineer. Engineered coatings was in there the other day, cut it all out. And patched it. Fortunately got caught before the stuff got, the salt from the end, you know, getting washed off and all that, got too far down into the floor. So they patched it, but it needs to be recoded and based on the damage that they saw. They came up with a cost of just under fifty thousand dollars to coat those three. Bays of that. Or that end of the uh firehouse floor. Uh. It needs to get done.
It's, those are the three bays next to the, where the kitchen?
No.
Oh, the other, the other end.
With all the weight of, especially like the tanker, well, with the, between the tanker and the uh engine. There's a lot of stress on that floor and that's what's been happening, it was cracking that upper level floor. And letting the water get down into the floor. Uh, so that's the floor that I have to get redone, so. That was on the list and I think, I believe the senior center is looking to get uh part of their flooring replaced, uh, possibly the vinyl floor. The senior center.
Well, anything that's, the senior center wants, I think should be voted down.
Okay.
Because that.
Immediately.
Well, what they do is just take, take and take. Right?
Babe? That was happening.
Now, so that was. The uh, and I'll get that list all cleaned up so we can really take a better look at it. Uh. Contingents.
Those aren't in here as of yet, right?
Well. We have the department request for capital non recurring. Up top for seven hundred, that's where the Board of Finance will look at this and decide what number they wanna put in there, that's up to them, obviously. Uh. Contingency left alone. And you'll see down uh, oh, up on my screen. The Town of Morris pension, I have three hundred fifty thousand, it is really for the Town of Morris pension, it's a hundred and fifty thousand. I threw two hundred thousand in there because I don't have another line item. For the uh region six pension.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, kind of a placeholder number, cause I'm not sure exactly what that should be yet.
Right.
So, just so, especially people online. Town of Morris pensions only looking for one fifty. Added two hundred for the region six pension until we get another line put in there to show. That pension number. I just wanna get all the totals in there so. You can kinda see at the end what this looks like. Uh, education. Again, I put this number in here, fifty, five million eight seventy four nine seventy, uh, that's a fifteen percent increase. Uh, off of last year's, just to see what it would look like. And it's interesting, cause if you go back to twenty three, twenty four, we're uh five million eight hundred eighteen. Thousand dollars.
Alright.
So we're only slightly ahead of. That might look like for us this year. Uh, really Board of Finance had nothing, the only question there is to uh check with the auditor on any increase in costs in the audit. Uh, it's been a twenty for some time. Assessment appeals, really nothing there, I sat down with Rob Edner at the fire department yesterday. Kind of finalized his budget. And his major increases, I believe, were the insurance and that's due to the uh value of the new engine five. Uh, which is brand new, so it's rather crossed up a little bit. Get some other smaller cost increase here and there. Nothing too much. Fire marshal, nothing changed there. Beach and Rec, uh. Some small changes. Was gonna ask, I haven't had a chance to talk with Kristen, just some minor increases in beach and wreck here and there that. Doesn't add up too much. Hundred and fifty dollars. Some questions about it. Library, nothing really at all other than wages. Minor ambibialination. Sorry, I'm going through this so quick. Yeah, stop me if you have anything. Zoning, I I talked to Tony about zoning. And we just just there's some line items like postage supplies that. Get a little lower and they're already over in them this year. So he said, why don't you bring that up a little bit? And legal notice, we barely touched that. You know, there's a two thousand dollar line item for it. So let's bring that down. And he said that that would be fine. Tax collector, most of it's kind of driven, although hers actually went down because she feels she needs less help as far as the clerk. We're able to hire. Hills of crap who works. In the fiscal office and the assessors office, we're able to hire her to come in and fill in in the tax office. Like two months out of the year, you know, during the busy times. So that was a reduction with an assistant clerk. And the other stuff is just normally goes up like computer support for the websites that she works off of and postage. Treasurer kind of runs into the same issue with a. Computer support. Nothing huge there. Or to help. We're gonna shift this line item, I believe. This is currently the V and A. They are only requesting two hundred and fifty dollars this year. I think we're gonna shift that over to a little farther down in the budget. I'll show you. Inland wetlands, no change. Zoning Board of Appeals, I spoke with Nancy Skilton yesterday, adjusted, we adjusted some of the numbers. I asked her, asked her about legal, she really didn't feel they, nothing they could see on the horizon. So I said, why don't we, you know, bring the legal down to twenty five hundred. And that will at least get them some consulting in case, you know, something does come up and hopefully no losses, so. Tom clerk. Really. Nothing different other than salaries and computer. You know, all the departments did a great job on holding the line. Assessor, I believe the same thing. We're gonna work on computer expense, maybe there's a hosted webpage on there which posted, I think by vision. And we're gonna see if we can do that on our own webpage instead of paying someone else to do it for us. Community Hall. I think you'll notice fuel, we went up a little bit. And if you notice on the screen, the telephone is a different color. We're hoping, I think we talked about in the past about reducing the telephone across town, hopefully close to half. Electricity up a little. That's it. General government. Salaries. Little increase in file server maintenance. I still, I'm waiting on like a firm number. We use Yucatech for our IT and he's waiting on some of his vendors' numbers to come through. He has seen increases in some of the costs. So as soon as he gets that, he will, we can get a firmer number on this. If you see anything, I talked to the registrars. They felt their numbers were good where they are. You'll see a little change in. Labor attorney. I adjusted some of the town council down a little bit and the labor attorney up a little bit. We will be going to contract negotiations. Let's see. Five, six, I think sometime next year. Health insurance, I haven't gotten a firm number, but I give throw an increase in there. It was ten percent. And the fifteen percent. I'm waiting on that number. As soon as I get it, we'll repopulate that. We are in with a region twenty on that and I believe that would. Woodbridge, Woodridge sewer. Company and somebody else for the health insurance. And here's the where I was gonna change the mental health board over to. V and A. I think. Yeah, five hundred. And the rest are the same. Highway, I met with Kyle yesterday and we spoke about his budget. He increased the seasonal wages a little bit. Telephone and internet are kind of, we're hoping to reduce those numbers based on a new service. Electricity is. He kind of running up there just through all the increased costs we've been seeing.
Right.
Supplies stay the same, garage maintenance went up a thousand. Road maintenance stayed the same. Equipment, gas and diesel. We, we did get. I'm not sure if you're aware, we did have the new tanks installed down at the highway department. So we get gasoline now as well as the diesel fuel. Which should really help on, you know, we're. I think we're gonna pay eighty cents less a gallon in diesel based on a new bid. And. We're going from. Paying at the pump. Price which included tax, we're seeing a significant savings in the gasoline costs as well. He decided to take engineering out of there. I think he'll probably utilize the town made road monies for any engineer on projects. As he said, like he said, twenty five hundred bucks, that really doesn't get you very far with an engineer. You don't get started, really.
Can I just ask on the diesel?
Yep.
You put the new tank down in the garage. Are you still keeping the tank at the firehouse?
No, we're gonna get rid of that.
So everything's gonna be down at the.
Yeah. Everyone has every vehicle has a pop. And they punch it all in and yeah. And for how much, you know, there was a little like, oh, we have to go all the way down there, but for how much they're filling up the engines, it's not bad. You know, to drive down there, fill up and come back instead of filling up there.
That's the payment that to gas up there sometimes.
And we'll get rid of that tank when it's empty, probably put it up for sale. It's got a new pump on it too. So it's a good tank. There's a maintenance, let's see. Why am I frozen up? I'm not. I don't know if you see anything else on highway then.
Very bottom, that's looking back to.
Fifteen are stormwater testing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got the proposal from Cardinal Engineering. They do our stormwater water testing both at the transfer station and the. Highway garage. And everything said and done would be a little less than three thousand dollars. So fifteen hundred here. And fifteen hundred at the transfer station. It's required by DEP, have it touched and done, I think twice a year.
Okay.
Insurance, this is strictly our working cap, workman's cap, property auto liability, zero percent increase this year. That was good news. I think in the contract we have with them, they can go up like three percent, but they held the line.
Don't forget to check on that. With insurance.
We're good.
Yeah.
Nothing new, rural transit. Oh, emergency management, we talked about this a little bit. With those stipends. Where we brought it up to ten thousand because five thousand of that will get returned to town through the grant. So. You needed enough in there to. Cover the grant to get reimbursed by the grant. So it's really a five thousand dollar line item, not a ten. And I think we're doing pretty good on. Tree removal, Kyle felt comfortable keeping it. Civil division is just the. Taxes. Or select my safety, I'm still waiting on. EMT outside service, there's gonna be a raise at. LBA, they have to bring their. Wages up to maintain their personnel there. Once I have a better number, I'll. Redo that number that's there. That is my best guesstimate is that three seventy six, five hundred. Dog warden, I think I talked to, there's no change there with Harlington. Although the first selectman now is an appointed dog warden here in the town of Morris. He's willing to go out on weekends and nights and. Got the lesson.
Even busy.
Been there. Building inspector, really no change. The only thing I gotta check with Rick is how he feels about the commission number. Because it's really based on. The permits that we get in and the amount, because you know, we don't want to be like too far under on that number. So. Rip will give us a better number on that based on his opinion.
Okay.
Transfer station. I got a question for him on sanitation. I was basically having a portal at there. I think he was a little too low on that number. Hazers household waste day, we did a great job this year, thanks to everyone that was involved on keeping our costs quite low comparatively to other towns. I think it was, it was less than fifteen hundred dollars we spent this year, which. To get rid of hazardous waste for Morris, we brought two, two vehicle loads up there. That was it. And we had a better, we let people know what we actually, they don't have to put in hazardous waste, which helps a lot too. Because we get charged per car load that goes there.
Great. That's coming up pretty soon, isn't it?
October, I think.
One of them.
It's ours, October.
I just saw something and.
There's one up in Falls Village, they do.
That's the one I saw.
We just did a bit, accepted a bid on the vendor for this hazardous waste day at the cog. And saw some substantial savings, at least for the council of governments from Clean Harbors to this new vendor. And I think with the new vendor, we also want to talk to them, why is it a charge for car load? Say someone brings half gallon gasoline. You know, and that's it. Why should we get charged that much for that? So we're gonna try to work with the vendors on keeping the cost down. And Dave is definitely starting to see a savings in recycling. With the single stream. The household waste is. Numbers are down, the household waste numbers are down due to the ordinance where commercial businesses must have a dumpster and they pay for their own cost of getting rid of that material. So we're starting to see that come in and like I said, we're gonna try ramp up that, the food. Getting rid of the food waste as well, get more people involved in this. Senior center, she did not, this is a question and maybe the board of finance will talk to Kristen. When they have a second. I think she was looking to increase the hours. To twenty five per week from nineteen right now for the assistant. I'm just thinking it's a tough budget year to do something like that. But that's a conversation they can have. Unless I can get a hold of Kristen earlier, talk with her. And you'll see again, the telephone and internet hopefully will can reduce that number this year. I think that that's really all she had and she didn't have much for increases at all. But. Throwing in the numbers that we had. We saw a slight increase in our grand list. Up to. Four hundred sixty six million, one hundred fifty four thousand. And which helps. And based on that, you have nine point six five four revenue from taxation. Our budget total, remember this includes the pension, includes that. Guesstimate of the increase in education. It's just a draft number. You're kind of looking at twenty point nine two mil, which is a three point three six mil increase. That's without putting any money in from the fund balance like we've been doing for the last few years. And again, that number, I don't even know where to begin with it. That's the board of finance to see what they feel comfortable with. They've been putting in close to, I believe, half a million every year for the last few years. But this would be the true increase without. Lowering it with the fund balance. So that's significant. And hopefully that will get reduced. But there's not a lot on our end there.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, our end. Most of our increases were wages.
Yeah.
Because it was part of the contract and. Insurance.
Yeah, the only thing I can see are really reducing much. Is the capital, what we put into capital instead of seven hundred thousand, what if we put in? Five hundred thousand or something like that, or you know, four hundred thousand. But you know, we've been in this, years ago, we're in this thing where. With everything we did was dependent on what the cost of education was.
Right.
And that's where you start putting aside things you should be doing. And you're putting them off and kicking them down the road because of the cost of education. Hopefully you'll find a balance there this year. I don't know, it's gonna be tough.
But the money we put in our fund balance is paid for some projects that we want, you know. That we wanted to take care of in the town.
Right.
And it helps the townspeople.
Yeah.
So. You know, it's, it's not that we wasted that money, we put it all to good use.
It's all an investment.
Our hands are tied now with this school budget.
Yeah, it's definitely gonna affect us this year, what we can do in the future, so. Yeah, hopefully it'll all work out.
Well, it'll work out, it's just a matter of. At what cost?
Yeah.
Well, and and the townspeople should be upset because. You know, they were on the impression they were voting for a school merger that was supposedly saving the money. And here we are a year later. And didn't look like it saved them any money. It looks like it's cost them money.
Yeah. Just see if I can find something. Any questions on? The budget at all? I know it was quick. Yes, Jim.
You mentioned, started mentioning something before about motor vehicle assessment and then you kind of tailed off. So is that the tax that we pay every year on our cars? I know there was some talk from.
It's how the cars are valued.
Right. They're gonna change this year or because I know there's some talk about if it was a limit or lowering that.
Let me see.
Because there's a town pay different amounts, right?
Yeah, they were gonna. Wish I could find that. What the state law allowed to happen was. You start the value of the used vehicle at a lower percentage. Like eighty. And work your way down from there or seventy. They just revised that. Up to where the towns can start at ninety percent instead, and we're gonna take that option because of the. Loss in revenue to motor vehicles. There's a lot of towns got hit by a fifteen percent reduction in the value of their motor vehicle list. I'm trying to find. That's the sort of maybe verbiage. And we're looking at taking the ninety percent option. Let's see. So the motion would be the Morris, motion to enact the local option of House Bill seven oh six seven. Which will start the depreciation schedule for motor vehicles from eighty-five percent to ninety percent. And that would take effective October first, twenty twenty-four motor vehicle grand list. So that'd be approving that option within that house bill that allows us to start the ninety percent level instead of lower. Saving us approximately twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue.
But wasn't there something in there about veterans?
Veterans is, I asked Betsy about that because I, I said I said, what about the veterans? And she goes, no, you don't even vote on that. That's automatic.
That, well, that, that's what kind of we talked about it.
Yeah, it's kind of like it throws in our lap.
Right.
Be the bad guy. But the state, it's automatically enacted.
Well, that's
They define what the whole total disability is, you know, kind of person, which is good. You know, this should be.
So you need a motion on that?
Yeah, to enact the local option in House Bill seven oh six seven, which allows depreciation schedule for motor vehicles from eighty-five percent to ninety percent. And it'll take effective on the October first, twenty twenty-four motor vehicle grand list. Basically what Betsy talked to us.
I'll make that motion. Because I know she was looking to get that thing moved forward.
Yeah, because she's gotta do a lot of work. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, wow. Twenty minutes to get to go.
One more thing?
Yes, sir.
The other talk around town is about the solar arrays that people are evidently doing.
Yep.
Is this a commercial venture on people's land? And if so, does the land need to be then zoned for commercial use? Or are there variances involved in this?
From my understanding, there's no zoning change that would be needed for this, but I'm gonna meet with one of the developers of this. Can't remember their name, Green something. To see what they're proposing. I believe what they're proposing is a four point oh five megawatt solar array down off of South Street. And that would have to go to Siding Council for approval, kind of takes away the local authority on this. The other array that I'm aware of, and the one I just spoke about is just south of North Terrill Farm Road. Kind of in some fields in the back on the right side, heading towards Bethlehem. The other one that I'm aware of is up here, the top of one oh nine, that farm on the left where the farm stand is. Back in there is another array. I'm not sure how big that one is yet. I haven't heard.
So they're commercial ventures, obviously, right? Because they're gonna be selling the power back to whoever it is. So again, if that property then is not zoned for commercial, would that, isn't that a conflict then?
From my understand, it bypasses local, you know, authority and goes to the Siding Council. It's kind of like putting in a cell tower on a piece of property.
Well, cell phone, cell towers. We have one approved.
Yeah. So, I mean, the good question, I'll find out more from Tony about it, but I think it goes right past zoning and to the Siding Council.
Everything I read, Tom, except the site council makes the decision.
I think it's on anything like two megawatt and bigger.
And bigger.
Yeah. The one in Morris for the town is under that, I think it's like one point nine eight or something like that. So it didn't have to go to Siding House.
Town makes sense. Private property is to me a different, like if you have town, town property. Okay, but if you have farmland and, you know, whatever, and you're living or whatever, and your neighbor says, okay, I'm taking five of my acres and now instead of looking out at woods, and I know, and now you're looking out these black solar panels. Yeah.
Yeah. We'll find out more about it as it comes along. I know they're ways away from official applications and all that, but they do have to notify the town, I think sixty days ahead of time. And so they haven't met that sixty, sixty day notice yet.
I think the one down on you know, who is, I think is pretty well underway as far as planning goes.
Yeah. So those are three big ones in town.
Yeah, really big. Yeah.
I think the big grab for them is there's capacity on the substation in Bethlehem that could take the added capacity. Plus, there's already three phase power run, which is key for a lot of these developments to have. Because if you don't have that.
Biggest key right there, yes.
So otherwise they have to pay to have it installed.
Six o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
So I have one question for you. And then I know you sent a letter about the Senator Morris here. The roundabout.
Yeah.
Did you ever hear anything back from her?
Uh, last I heard, I don't remember if I told you, I said, what's going on with this whole design? You're supposed to, remember they're gonna come back to us to shift it a little. Keep it off that corner. And their response was, well, we're working on it, but we got wrapped up in Southbury with all the flooding and the engineering down there. So that was the last I heard from the guy. I'll try again, but, you know, they are gonna move forward and pave anyways, of course, so. Maybe then we'll have to rip it up for another ten years by the time the roundabout comes through.
You're probably right.
Is this on your agenda as well for later, the unemployment bills? So they're
Yeah.
Concern of the fees for not paying and all?
And that's a, kind of, you know, back to the region twenty a little bit is the unemployment and who's expenses that? Yeah. That's a question that really has to answer.
Well, for multiple.
Yeah, but we're at about thirty-five thousand right now. Seven twenty-one.
I didn't know you can get unemployment when you resign.
Yeah, there's some question on what he resigned from at the time.
And get fired.
But all of them, there's more than
Yes, there's a number, but my, one of the bigger problems is why are we paying interest in penalties?
Yeah, well, I'm let's not keep paying or keep occurring, growing.
Thank you guys for everything that you're doing.
I appreciate it.
You're trying to stand behind you. Give you support.
Appreciate it. Their motion to adjourn at five forty-eight?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry.